Hello. How are you?
Good, I'm fine. How about you?
Stay out of trouble this week. We'll make sure next week. How are our babies?
My perception of...
Hey, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Recording's in progress. Recording stopped.
The skills will be good today.
She likes to go.
I can get it in your ass. You know, this is in the evening, this is...
You want chocolate?
No.
No. Hey, no, no, no. I haven't seen what it's like now. Three hours, you're supposed to have one thing. It's not about that more. That's okay. I know who you are. Oh, that's enough. Where do we get that from? What's a hidden question, baby?
Small room. Small room. Yeah. They get that taller.
This is for the meeting, not CRA.
Oh, do you need somebody to make your doughs? Hang on. Do you need somebody to make some doughs? Actually...
I made baked cheese.
Well, yeah, but isn't it made?
We're trying to group them all things.
All these, all these. Don't you?
Your hubby can't do it. Your hubby can't do it.
Oh, really?
We turn off the lights.
Turn on the lights, yes. I got a tour. Well, that's another thing. They'll do it.
It's just, it's just the...
He was gonna come over and order pizza horses. That is so sweet.
I would like to call to order the City of Dunellen's Special Community Redevelopment Agency Meeting. It is May 23, 2022. It is currently 5:03 PM. Would you please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you all continue to stand? Is there anyone that would like to say a prayer or say any words of encouragement to council or express any thoughts? Okay, no one's there? Oh, yes. Okay, please.
Thank you.
Come on up, come onto the mic so we can hear you. There you go.
Thank you, Heavenly Father, that you have allowed us to gather together in freedom and thank you, Heavenly Father, for everything you've done in our lives and that you have united us together just to know that you have the glory, the power, and the honor. Just let us have wisdom to do the right things, speak the right things, and know the right things. Thank you, Heavenly Father. We pray in your precious, holy, wonderful name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much. All right, everybody, have a seat. Okay, Ms. Sodum, roll call.
Mayor White.
President.
Vice Mayor Hampshire.
I am here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Kenny.
Here.
Councilwoman Tubage.
Present.
Jan Smith, Finance Officer.
Here.
Georgina Sid, Community Development Manager.
Here.
Gloria Siller, Public Works Manager.
Here.
Michelle Leonard, Assistant City Clerk.
Here.
Chief McQuaid and Lieutenant Yawkes are not at the CRA meeting. City Attorney Andrew Hand.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Monday, May 16, 2022.
Very good. All right, before we get started, if you look up at the monitor, it will basically give you a general rundown of how we have conducted the meeting. Things up there that are most relevant. If you would like to speak, you have three minutes to speak. Please remember that everything you say is being recorded and is public record. If you have your phone on for a beep or a ring, please turn it off and direct your comments directly to the council. To me specifically, but generally to the council, not to the audience. All right, with that said, we will now go to the regular agenda. We go to item number one. The application for CRA Historic Preservation Facade Rehabilitation Reimbursement Grant, HPBG 2022-0249. Andres Arvalo, 11928 North Williams Street, New Triangle.
Excuse me, Ms. Leonard, I think we had to do the approved publication.
I did.
You did? Guys, I am losing it. My apologies, sir.
Well, I'm happy to know I'm not the only one.
Oh, you didn't hear it? You didn't hear it either? Sorry about that. My apologies.
With that, we start off with a public comment. Does anybody have any public comments on Agenda Item Number One? Okay, please note, Ms. Sodum, there is no public comment. We have, can we have a motion, a proposed motion?
So moved. For proof.
Okay, it's a CRA grant fund be awarded in the maximum eligible amount of $5,000 for the above applicant. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any council discussion? Please note, council has had an opportunity to make comment and there are none. We'll bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Go to item number two. Application for CRA Historic Preservation Facade Rehabilitation Reimbursement Grant, HPBG 2022-0252. Gloria Williams, 20698 Chestnut Street. Do we have any public comment on Agenda Item Number Two? Sodum, please note, the public has been offered an opportunity to comment and there are none. Can we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is to CRA grant funds be awarded in the maximum eligible amount of $5,000 for application, HPBG 2022-0252 to Gloria Williams. We have a motion and a second. Is there council discussion?
Does staff have anything to report about any of these at all?
They were all presented to the Historic Board and they recommended that these be approved. So they all have been reviewed by the Historic Board.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That, council, that is a good point Vice Mayor made up. Doesn't preclude council from asking for an explanation of what these may be. So that's up to us. Any further discussion?
None. I'm just glad to see that the money's being used.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. We go to Agenda Item Number Three. Application for CRA Historic Preservation Facade Rehabilitation Reimbursement Grant, HPBG 2022-0254. Nicola Champ of 20731 Powell Road. We will accept any public comment on Agenda Item Number Three at this time. Please note, there is no public comment. Do we have a motion for item number three?
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, sir.
Is this for accusation of Powell Road?
No.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry. I missed that.
No.
You're okay. You still love him.
That's okay.
That will come up at the next meeting. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Okay, with no discussion, we will bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the motion on that one. I mentioned and somebody else seconded it.
I think Ms. Williams seconded.
I did. Thank you. I didn't think you.
Okay. This number four is a little different. Number four is the Historic Preservation Board Grant Policy Revision. Is there any public comment on item number four? Hey, please note that there is no public comment, although it was offered. Do we have a motion to approve the proposed revision?
Excuse me.
Can we have Georgina present this one, please?
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
And then, and then we'll do our motion. Okay, very good.
Yes, the Historic Board Preservation members had requested for you all to review this policy grant because they wanted to add something in the, in the policy that said that contractors could get paid directly by the city for, for the, for the job that they were going to be performing on these grants. But I've consulted with the attorney and he has an opinion about it before you guys make any decision on it.
Sure, and I can speak to that. The way that this grant is set up right now and the way that all the grants that Dunellen has created, they are reimbursement grants. And that is done for a reason. And that is typically the way that all grants are, are done for CRA and any type of, any type of work that's done. And the reason is simply that it takes the city out of having to deal with a contractor and disputes that may arise. So in other words, right now, somebody comes with an application before the city says, "Okay, well, we'll give you a grant if you do this work." They settle it out with their contractor and, and then when it's done, the city can inspect and then make the payment. If the city's paying the contractor directly, that creates some issues. The property has not been inspected as well as puts the city, the transaction, in dealing with the contractor. It just creates some liability and some other issues that are problematic. So had I been at the meeting, I would have provided that advice to the Historic Board and told them I don't recommend it. So in this case, I don't recommend these changes because of the, because of the issues that they raise. The reason, as I understand it, per Georgina, for the request for these changes was that some of the individuals who would benefit most from the applications may not be able to afford the upfront costs. And unfortunately, I don't have a solution to that issue for them. All I can tell you is that it does create a liability issue for the city to have to make direct payments to a contractor.
Because I've asked that question before. Even our finance officer, she's always opod'd me on that one as well. So, and I for that explanation as well before.
Okay, so what I would suggest is we make a motion and a second and then we can have discussion and then a vote.
Well, do we even have to have a motion if we don't want it to go forward?
That's true. We can do it that way, too. All right, so the way I understand it, Andrew and Georgina, is the way it's currently set up is if you apply for the grant, you do the work first as the property owner. You pay the contractor and then you come in with your bills and you get your reimbursement back, correct?
That is correct.
And what the Historic Preservation Board is suggesting is you, as the property owner, would have the work done and then the city would pay the contractor direct, correct?
Correct.
I can see where that would create a lot of, a lot of headaches. It puts the city answerable to the contractor, right?
And I just had a thought, Mr. Mayor. We might try and work with one of our local banks, as Ie. Brandon Bank or one of our local banks, to see if they would maybe work with us to do like a small loan with knowing if they're guaranteed if they get the approval of the grant. I mean, we might talk to our banks about something like that to see if they can work with that. So there might be something that we can do outside of, you know, try and help people get these funds, maybe work with our local banks to see if they can partner up with the Historic Board, you know, something like that. So maybe we can't do it now, but maybe we can reach for, you know, community assistance.
Let me ask you, Georgina, were, were you there at the Historic Preservation Meeting and heard the discussion why they wanted to do this?
Because of the same things that the attorney just mentioned, because they feel that some people don't have the means to, to have that money upfront to pay for those projects and they still want to do, they still want to reconstruct their facade, but they don't have the money to do it, you know, to, to pay for it upfront. So they were asking for us to pay the contractor and, you know, and avoid having to bring that money forward since they don't have it.
And it was voted on by the Historic Board to recommend that change?
The Historic Board made a motion to bring it to your attention.
And you recall what the vote was? Was it unanimous or was it a split vote?
It was a unanimous vote.
A unanimous vote.
But the attorney wasn't there to give guidance, correct?
No.
So the city would be paid back if that were to happen? They would be responsible for paying the money back, right? I don't understand.
If, if we were, I mean, if we were to, to approve, to change this on the policy, we would be paying the contractor.
Okay.
When, when that, whenever they have an application to do a project like that. Instead of them having to pay upfront and then bringing in the invoices for us to pay them those $5,000 in grant money.
Okay.
It's just, the way I'm understanding it, it's reversing who pays the worker.
Okay.
Right. It's a liability.
Right.
Of the city.
We're talking about this matter.
Right, so the way it's currently constructed is if you do $5,000 worth of work, you pay the contractor and come to the city with the bills.
Right.
We pay you back. What's being proposed is you come in with the bills and we pay the contractor for you. And that creates some issues. Definitely puts us into a, a conflict if there is a conflict with the contractor. All right? All right. So is there any further discussion, comments on this?
Yes.
I would refer also to Jan. She may have some input on the subject and how it would actually work.
I can't speak for the bank. I can agree with Andrew as far as liability. We pay the contractors directly. That's not something I would, would recommend either. But as far as a loan, the bank...
No, that's, that was just an outside thought.
I mean, it's not a bad thought, but the bank incurs costs to do credit check on the applicant and they have to go through, I'm sure, the same process as any other, any other, anybody else applying for the loan. And they would still be responsible for any monies that the bank would put out if the project doesn't finish. They've put out $5,000 for the, for that applicant to get the project started. They don't have to put them on the hook. And you have to pay back the bank. So again, I can't speak for the bank. But if council, you know, wants me to pursue something like that and speak to them, I would be more to have to...
That'd be a Chamber of Commerce statement. It was just an, it was just an outside thought. That's awesome. Not to think outside thoughts.
Any, any other comments?
No, in all fairness, I do think that this should be extended to give the Historic Board an opportunity to hear what the attorney had to say on this particular issue.
So can we table this for now and then let the Historic Board be informed by Georgina and attorneys what the issues are and then they can decide if they want to bring it back up or not? Would that be good?
Well, they, they've already, this is finished business on their part. They've actually taken a vote and they're asking us to approve it or disapprove it. They can always re-bringing up themselves if they want.
I, I'll make a motion to reject the proposed amendment change.
I second that one. I understand.
To oppose?
Oppose.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor and seconding to say no to the recommendation of the Historic Preservation Board. Any further discussion? No further discussion, Ms. Sodum? All in favor of the no vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Oppose the no?
For clarity, the council has not denied, or denied the recommendation of the Historic Board. All right, now we're going to number five. It's public comment. Mr. Hand, I would expect since this public comment does not specify what public comment is to be, two, it could be public comments outside of what's on this agenda.
Typically, it would deal with the CRA Board, but there is not specification. So if you would prefer to entertain comments about any type of city business, then that's at the council's discretion.
I would prefer to have public comments specific to what we just discussed. And then when we get to the regular meeting, have comments there. That's what I would prefer.
It would, it would be, anything related to the CRA, that would be fine.
Okay, public comment on anything that deals with the CRA or something related to what we just discussed. Anything on Zoom, Mandy?
No, sir.
Okay, we have no public comments. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second? We are adjourned. Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, everyone, we're going to take about a seven or eight minute recess and we start our regular meeting at 5:30. Thank you very much. I'd like to call to order the City of Dunellen's Special City Council Meeting. It is May 23, 2022. It is now 5:34. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you all continue to remain standing? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come up to the podium?
Or hand.
And say a prayer?
Thank you. Let's pray. Father, I thank you for City Hall and all the people that work here. I thank you for you, for your mercy, for your grace, for your forgiveness and your blessings. Thank you for the men and women who are diligently serving you here at City Hall, its residents, respectively, as the mayor and the councilmen and women. Father, I pray that you would help each of them to make good decisions tonight. Give them a sharp mind to think things through and that they, everything that they do would be for your glory. I bless them in your name, in Jesus'. Amen.
Amen.
All right, everyone, have a seat. Ms. Sodum, roll call.
Mayor White.
President.
Vice Mayor Hampshire, I'm here. Councilwoman Williams, you're...
Councilwoman Kenny.
Here.
Councilwoman Tubage, you're Gloria Siller, Public Works Manager.
Here.
Jan Smith, Finance Officer.
Here.
Georgina Sid, Community Development Manager.
Here.
Michelle Leonard, Assistant City Clerk.
Here.
Chief McQuaid.
Here.
Lieutenant Yawkes.
Here.
City Attorney Andrew Hand.
Here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Monday, May 16, 2022.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sodum. Before we start on the meeting, I'd like to make a couple comments on some of our housekeeping. If you look up at the monitor, it will give you a synopsis of how we conduct our meetings. If you would like to speak, if you sign up, you will be allowed to speak or asked to speak first. If you haven't signed up, you will still be allowed to speak after those that have spoken will speak. If you're going to speak to an agenda item, you must wait till that agenda item comes up. Hearing the public comment that is not connected to the agenda, you can speak about any subject that you would like. You will be given three minutes to speak. We do remind you that everything you say is being recorded, is being transcribed, and it will be put in the city's permanent records. So please, when you speak, speak directly into the microphone loudly and clearly. There are people that actually do listen to this on Zoom. Quite amazing. Some people are really dedicated and do listen. And if you do speak, please give your name and address when you come up to the podium. Okay, with that said, we will begin. If you look at the agenda, we are now at council comments regarding the agenda. I would like to make a comment on the agenda. We have an agenda that has three basic items on it. I do believe, though, that most people that are here to speak are here to speak to the item number three, the turnpike extension letter. And I would ask council if you would consider changing the order of the agenda and put that first so those that have come there for that reason can speak and be on their way if they want to be.
Good, that's fine. Yes.
Very, very good. Any other comments by council? Any other comments by council on the agenda?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind. Hey, thank you for inviting me in here tonight. Because this is a special council meeting, at first we were only supposed to have the one item on here and it has gone, it probably will go longer than I was anticipating. I do have a family obligation that I will need to be attending. So I'll probably try and get out of here about 7:15, the latest, 7:30, just FYI.
Thank you very much, appreciate that, heads up. Okay, where we're at right now is this is an opportunity if you would like to speak as the public to any item that is not on the agenda. This is the opportunity to talk about new business, old business, things you want the council to know about, comments, suggestions, if it's not on the agenda. If it is on the agenda, you need to wait until we get to the agenda. So at this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to come up and speak to something that is not on the agenda? Ms. Odom, is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. Please note that the residents, citizens have been offered the opportunity to speak on non-agenda items and there have been none. So we continue, it is now 5:40. Now we go to item number three on the agenda. Council has already switched that. This will be the discussion of the Northern Turnpike Extension Letter. So at this time, Ms. Odom, do we have public comment on that before discussion?
You're not taking a vote on anything tonight, so it's just discussion. So you can take your public comment whenever you like.
I would think since most people are here hoping to do something other than listen to the discussion, we should allow them to speak.
Do you want to introduce the letter that you asked to be put on the agenda?
Yes, can you put the letter?
And do we need to have the, our Chamber of Commerce, I see is here? Should we want them to maybe address it in that public comment?
Yes, I think that would be the best thing. We put this on the agenda. This is a letter that has been co-signed by the Citrus County Chamber of Commerce, the Ocala Metro Chamber Economic Partnership, known as CEP, and the Danellin Chamber and Business Association. This letter was written and approved by their Board of Directors sometime within the last week. And I am the liaison for the city and was at the meeting when this letter was approved. I made no comment on it at that time because it's not my position to comment unless asked with their business. So after seeing the letter and not knowing totally what the intent and what the purpose of it was, I thought we'd put it on the agenda and give you an opportunity to explain it. Judy, name and address.
Judy Toelker, do you want my home address or do you want the Chamber? The Danellin Chamber and Business Association. The purpose of this letter is just to make, to make the secretary and the executive director of the Turnpike aware that the three chambers want to be involved, not in the decision-making, but be involved in any information that's disseminated from them. So that then we can be the liaisons to the rest of the community. That's really all it is. There's nothing, you know, it just lists our concerns. That's really all it is, it's quite benign, actually. Is there any other questions on the letter?
Did it already get out?
Yes.
Has, Mandy, could you read the letter out loud for the rapper? If you don't mind, and that way everybody in the audience can know what the letter was addressed.
We have it on the monitors right now and our clerk, city clerk, will read it out loud for the record of that idea. Ms. Odom, please just read through it. Public will have comments shortly afterwards. So, Ms. Odom, please.
The letter is addressed May 6, 2022, to Jared Perdue, Secretary of the Florida Department of Transportation, and Nicola LaCory, Executive Director and CEO of Florida Turnpike Enterprise. Dear Secretary Perdue and Director LaCory, as FDOT and FTE consider the four preliminary alternative corridors to extend the Florida Turnpike to U.S. Highway 19, the Citrus County Chamber of Commerce, the Ocala Metro County Chamber and Economic Partnership, and the Danellin Chamber and Business Association recognize that our chambers can and should be partners to help DOT through this process. Our respective chambers have done much to listen to the concerns of our businesses and our residents and have already worked hard to help calm the rhetoric and correct the misinformation that is circulated. By joining forces together on this turnpike issue, we believe we can be not only an asset to our communities, but also to FDOT to help with accurate dissemination of information. Particular, I'm sorry, similar to parameters that DOT follows when designing a roadway, our collaborating chambers also advocate parameters and concerns to take into account when determining the ultimate corridor. Among our common concerns are farmland preservation areas, including the character and culture of the farmlands and horse farms, as well as the other things that make our communities unique. Existing conservation lands owned by the State of Florida and Southwest Florida Water Management District. Rainbow Springs, karst regions, and other environmentally sensitive areas. Wildlife habitat preservation and safe access corridors. Existing residential neighborhoods and schools. Existing business and industrial areas. Local comprehensive and strategic plans. As FTE and FDOT take further initiatives towards extending the turnpike, we would appreciate you staying in close contact with our three chambers. Between us, we represent approximately 2,500 local businesses and organizations. The Danellin 230, Citrus 910, CEP 1400, which employ upwards of 50,000 people and we communicate regularly with them. We seek to be your partners in assuring that if a turnpike extension is ultimately built, that it is in the most beneficial to our communities. Sincerely, Josh Wooton, President and CEO, Citrus County Chamber of Commerce. Kevin Shiley, President of Ocala Metro County Chamber and Economic Partnership. Judy Turwiler, Executive Director, Danellin Chamber and Business Association.
Very good. First of all, Judy, thank you for coming and representing the chamber. What I'd like to do next is to allow council, if they have any questions or comments toward you representing the chamber, then we can open it up for the public to come up and make comment themselves.
Okay.
Ms. Kenny, do you have any comments?
I just think the public involvement is critical. And I appreciate very much that you have written this letter.
Oh, all right, thank you. I can't take credit for the letter, that letter was actually written by Josh Wooton. But I think it's very well written, kind of expresses our feelings.
Our common interest and our needs, absolutely.
Ms. Williams?
Just thank you for your concern on the way to this.
No problem, that's my job.
It's going to be effective if this happens.
Ms. Cabbage?
I think most people are here today because of the last sentence of this letter. This letter, obviously, was designed to basically copycat the letter that was sent to FDOT by the Marion County Commissioners. And the last sentence basically does the same thing as what their letter did. It leaves the door open as an invitation for the Turnpike Authority, those people that are representing this plan, to go ahead and stay with your plan, just keep in touch. We here in Danellin represent the majority of the people who have already spoken and we put out a no build resolution. So did other communities, Levy County Council, so on, so on. I'm not going to tell you about the meetings and so on, you are all well aware of it. The problem with the letter is it is not a statement that says, "We object to this turnpike path coming into southwest Marion County on a path that specifically goes against Florida Department of Environmental Protection studies that say it's going to be a huge disturbance to our environment, our Rainbow River Drainage Basin." It states right in the 2015 and 2017 revision of the Rainbow River Basement Management Program. And I have a quote in my head, it says, "The building of highways are a direct toxic," I'm sorry, "directly would bring toxins into both our major aquatic, major aquifer as well as runoff." Okay, we're talking about the construction phase itself and then the permeable pavement. Literally is within a rock's throw of our head springs, never mind cut through the drainage basin. The people who are the influencers, the major is Kevin Shaly. Who's Kevin Shaly? Besides being a Cal Metro County Chamber and Economic Partnership, Mr. Shaly also is Executive Director and Agent for the Marion County Industrial Development Authority. They are working with people, the people, out-of-state corporations who want to put up a pathway of industrial parks and high-density housing all the way from I-75 right into our backyard. And they need a six-lane turnpike as a conduit to bring in trucks and trucks and trucks and trucks. Okay, we are talking light pollution, we are talking noise pollution, air pollution, and water pollution. And this letter keeps the door open for that to come. And they have ignored, when they put out those maps of the pathways, all of the things that you are concerned about. So why do you want to say, okay, we know already that they have a mindset that ignores all these bullets? So the problem with the letter, Judy, is the last sentence. We have a no build resolution. And people, I'm going to let the people speak.
Vice Mayor?
Judy, do you remember, if I'm not mistaken, who did in the Chamber of, the Danellin Business Chamber of Commerce? Actually, that name. Didn't y'all already write a letter opposing this when it first started?
I don't believe we wrote a letter, but I believe we surveyed our members and they want to keep it rolling.
I thought it was, maybe it was back when Julie was on. I believe the Chamber has, I think I was liaison at that time. So I just want to make sure. See, you might look back through the files to find that, but I do, I do know that the Chamber members, when I was liaison, they were definitely against this, as we always have been up here in the City Council. What was it, they found a news article back in 1999 that I was against it back then when they were trying to do this. So this is a old situation that keeps springing up inside my head and we keep finding it. So, you know, so thank y'all and just, you know, maybe, I agree that the letter could have been a tad more, please remember the no builds.
Right. As I said, I didn't write it, but.
I think.
You didn't write it, but you signed it.
Yes, but reading it, I didn't read it as, oh, they're going to do this. I read this as.
You're not here to be challenged, so you're fine.
All right, just say.
Louise wants to say something. The only comment I was going to make is the way I thought you were approaching it, knowing how adamant we are here to keep our rural lifestyle and to protect our resources, that we wanted to be involved in the conversation.
Exactly.
And when we are involved with the conversation, I think most of us have already stated how firmly we believe that no build is the answer.
I agree, that's why I want to be involved in the conversation.
So if you participate, I think you have the better chance of your voice being heard.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Okay, a couple comments. Along with Councilwoman Cabbage, this basic letter is very close to what was hotly debated a couple months ago from the Marion County Commissioners when they had to discuss a letter that would either come up with language that was against the turnpike extension based on the same rationale of EMCORs, or to write a softened letter, which is basically this, that didn't take exception. And the Commissioners, on a split vote of 3-2, voted, two voted against this letter. Right? So this was hotly debated about it. Commissioners Zalek and Commissioner Bryant voted for a stronger letter. And Commissioner Goldstone and Curry voted for this version of it. So Marion County itself has really struggled with this letter. I find it interesting that you said, "I was not aware of this until Vice Mayor Anchar asked," that fairly recently, the Danellin Chamber came out with a letter saying you were in favor of protecting rural areas. And that was related to the EMCORs highway.
Right, right.
Which was a turnpike that was supposed to come through basically in similar areas that this is coming through. And at that time, you wrote a letter that you had issues with it. So now your letter isn't saying you have issues with it. You're saying if you choose to do it, we want to be part of the process.
Well, I don't, I don't believe that's the case. I believe, for me, the way I wrote the letter is it's stating that I need to, we need to be part of the process so we can then bring our more concerns to the FDOT. That's how I'm looking at it.
So to me, there's two sentences in here that I struggle with. Is, if you go to, Mandy, paragraph number two, if you look at the, actually, the first sentence of paragraph number two, it says, "Our respective chambers have done much to listen to the concerns of our businesses and our residents and have already worked hard to help." And this is, I have an issue with this. Calm the rhetoric and correct the misinformation that has been circulated. So is said to calm and correct the misinformation that's for the turnpike or against the turnpike?
I don't think that it's either, I think it's just to get the truth out there. I don't, I mean, I've also heard that it's going to go right through Danellin, too, so.
Really, I'm really, you know, wondering, you know, what the rhetoric and the misinformation is. And then when you go to the third paragraph, this one kind of jumps out at me. Similar to parameters that the DOT follows when designing a roadway, our collaborating chambers also advocate parameters and concerns to take into account when determining the ultimate corridor. So this is an admittance that the consideration is for a corridor, but doesn't spell out that one of the options is no build.
Well, I can tell you that I'm certainly for the no build, so that's going to be what I'm going to bring to them.
But no build is not even mentioned in this. It's just, it's stating that if you make a decision on one of the corridors, then we want to be part of the process, but it doesn't state that if you build, if you decide no build, we'd like to be part of that process, too.
Well, it's getting us to the table. I mean, at this point, it's just getting us to the table so that we can bring our concerns.
Okay, so those are by two things with the letter. So those are by two, two things with the letter. Statement, calm the rhetoric. That, to me, is a little bit of an insinuation that those that are having issues with this are a little bit, a little bit angry and need to be calmed down and they're misinformed. I think that most people that are all over this are very informed. And, and the idea that we're going to help, that if you determine an ultimate corridor, we want to be part of it, without mentioning the no-build, the no-bill.
Well, that's your interpretation. My interpretation is to get us to the table again so that we can get their ear, so to speak.
Any other comments for council?
Yeah, I have more comments. I have other comments. Judy, I think your intentions probably were for Donellen. Okay? That's why you work with us, okay? And I know you worked as a volunteer. Fortunately, the underpinnings of this letter don't support, doesn't represent the Donellen, our neighbors within our city or outside. They represent the intent of those persons within Ocala, the commercial bankers, the heavy-duty real estate investors, corporations that are outside of this area who want to come in and exploit it. And they really don't care about little old Donellen and the effects. They haven't been sure about our, about our river, the springs or anything. I just pulled this example off. This, this is not a dated article. This is a perfect example of what happens when you let decisions be made by politicians who are influenced heavily. And when I say politicians, I include Kevin Shaly. And he came here from Lexington 10 years ago with a warning label. Okay? He's not a new guy in town. And people know what his intents are. Intent, absolutely, was to preserve the very wealthy horse farm area that is zoned out. There is no way they're going to build a four-lane, six-lane through there. Okay? Here's what happens. Polte Homes destroys 22 Florida tortoise burrows and pays a $12,000 fine. You know where this happened? Right down the road from us on 200. Yep. They paid $13,700 fine for 22 counts of killing gopher tortoise at Turdises at Stone Creek. That's how much they care about wildlife, the landscape, our environment, our water, and so on. Not to mention the amount of neighborhoods that going to play have. We're going to displace people, thousands and hundreds of them. Okay? And what are we going to get returned? We'll get, we'll get an exit and insurance ramp, and the big old Love's Truck Stop. They pay $10 others an hour and they only let you work six hours a day. That's what we're going to get.
What is it? So you say it's going to work off Donellen?
Wait a second. Ms. Judy is not here to speak to anything of her...
I know, but I'm saying this letter should have been considered heavily as far as what the impact on Donellen, not Ocala, not Ocala.
Judy, thank you for coming. The reason, the reason for the concern is this council is very much no-build.
And I understand that.
And we, we feel that this letter is similar to the letter that the county came up with, that, that commission was booed when they wrote this because it did not support or acknowledge the no-build option. So for those same reasons that the county commissioners received criticism, this letter is in the same vein. And it's, it's against, totally against what this council is trying to do.
I understand that. Again, I wanted a seat at the table and this is a good way to get a seat at the table. That's period and the story. That's the only reason why I did this letter.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We will now open this up to public comment. We will go by those that have signed up first.
Paul John Reinhart.
Name and address. Because of the number of people, Mr. Reinhart, we will be monitoring the three-minute limit pretty closely.
Great. I'm Paul John Reinhart, M.D., and my address is 325 South Jefferson Street, Beverly Hills, Florida, and I lived there for the last 43 years. I'm a candidate for the State House District 23 in an open primary. I'm a Teddy Roosevelt conservationist Republican whose great-grandfather sailed from Tampa with Teddy Roosevelt charged up San Juan Hill as a rough rider. President Calvin Coolidge said that the business of America is business, but there wasn't one route on FDOT's proposed routes that doesn't wipe out small businesses. Some routes actually wipe out minority-owned black small businesses. The role of any Chamber of Commerce is to protect the most vulnerable of the businesses, not to seek to annihilate them in favor of large corporate conglomerates. I'm truly running a Teddy Roosevelt campaign. I'm a conservationist that doesn't want the wildlife border disturbed. I don't mind clobbering corporate greed, pushing these roads over the head with a big stick. And that includes greedy big developers. In the words of John F. Kennedy, "Let us not seek the Republican answer or the Democrat answer, but the right answer. Let us not seek to fix blame for the past. Let us accept our own responsibility for the future." This council did that right. It shows no-bill. Please stick to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sodow, next.
Barbara Ocasio.
Welcome. Name and address, please.
My name is, I go by Barbie, Barbara Ocasio. I live at 1, I haven't read it down, 10258 North Gardner, Vice, at St. Springs. We're really close neighbors here and I come here all the time with my daughter. First, I want to address rhetoric. What rhetoric? We do our homework. We see what's going on. You did your homework. Thank you so much. And thank you for your referendum of no-build. We appreciate that. Okay. Actually, the Suncoast should have never come this close to us. They had a Chronicle poll. 67% of the people who knew about it said, no, don't do it. This is still America. It's we, the people. It's up to the people. The representatives represent the people. The people are saying, no, no-build. And no-build doesn't mean just, okay, stop. Except for the big stuff they're building, that should stop. It should say. And their study said the same thing. Do not build no more roads, highways. Fix what we have. We have over 470 state roads, over 67 counties. Just say five county roads in each, but most have many more. That's 333, so we're close to 1,000 roads. Not including the turnpikes, the highways, everything that's here. If you look at a map with just the roads and the train, uh, train, um, train tracks, we have plenty of road. We just need to fix what we have and the problem will be solved. We don't need somebody to sit at a table with these people that want to destroy us. They don't care. My father has 30-year experience in the military. They came here for their dream home and they're right there and smack dab in the middle of this mess. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Diane Myers.
Dr. Myers, name and address.
Name Myers, 10925 Southwest 186 Circle, Donellen. Just beating a dead horse here because I think the consensus is there that, that we don't want this. We had surveys 20 years ago and both people that grew up here and people that moved here from other places wanted to keep this overall environment. And if you build it, they will come. If you build a superhighway through here, it's going to be mobbed and it's going to be crazy, just like the places that so many of us left. We have a wonderful quality of life here and we want to keep it. And I think we need to be unambiguous about any kind of conversations we have with the DOT. I think it needs to be abundantly clear that we do not want any major highways coming through here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sodow?
Nancy Myers.
Hello, Nancy. Name and address.
10925 Southwest 186 Circle, Donellen. I guess I'm just reiterating what everyone else has said, that no means no, and we need to be clear about that. We don't want our precious little jewel of a town to turn into something that we later think, oh, my God, why did we let this happen? There's plenty of big cities. There's plenty of concrete in this world. If that's what people want, let them go there. We don't, we don't need that here. We need to conserve what we have and just, no means no. And we just need to say it loud and proud.
Amen. No.
Ms. Sodow?
The last name in here is difficult to read. It looks like the last name may be Delvin, Nancy.
Actually, that was Neil Soraya.
Okay.
No comment. Okay. That is everybody that has signed up. Now what we will do...
There's none of the forms. Excuse me, there's no forms out there.
Wait a second. Everybody's going to get a chance to speak. You're going to get a chance to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Just whoever signed gets to speak first. Yes, Ms. Sodow?
We have one that's not signed, you know. I have everybody that signed up and I have one to do.
Was, was this person signed up?
No.
No? Well, let's, we'll do the Zoom one last.
Okay.
Okay. Raise your hand. Dr. Eno. Just relax. Everybody who wants to speak will have an opportunity to speak.
I'm Bert Eno. I live at 9220 Southwest 193rd Circle, out in Rainbow Springs. I was here before the city decided upon a resolution of no-build. In fact, I think I brought that resolution here as a proposal and discussed it with the City Council and discussed it with the public. And I personally pointed out all of the, all of the deleterious things about the toll road. And I haven't changed my mind a bit. In fact, it's even stronger in the fact that it's a bad, bad, bad idea. I got the opportunity to read this letter produced by the Business Association and it seems to be like a sign-on to the other two parties. And I think that Judy was, in fact, hinting that she really wasn't taking the full responsibility for the content of this letter and was kind of coattailing the others. We know that the others are more pro-business, pro-big business in the pockets of the big developers and so on. But it seems to me that she should have known, the business people of the community should have known that the city had done a fair amount of homework, had done their duty, good review, chewed it over plenty of times and came to the conclusion that no-build is the only option for and around Donellen. And that was celebrated. And in fact, at meetings I've been to since then, in Citrus County even, I've seen it celebrated over and over and over again. When the county decided three to two to ask for a seat at the table and worry about their niche over there near the city of Ocala instead of out here in the western part of the county, 100 people that had gotten up and spoken to the county were very disappointed. There was quite an uproar there. And I don't know how Michelle Stone stood the boos she got that day, but she's the one that spearheaded their opinion and was eventually signed. I think that was a big mistake. And I think that this represents, on behalf of the Business Association of Donellen, really a, kind of a stab in the back. I think that the city has seen it as how the city had done all their homework and came to the conclusion they did that the Board of, the City Board should have taken cognizance of that and just simply support it. I agree that the language is very misleading and I recommend to the Chamber of Commerce that they rescind this letter.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Yes, sir, with the sunglasses. Name and address, sir.
Jeff Slossum, 19300 Northwest 13th Street, Donellen. Still not very good at this, but... So the problem with the letter, from my perspective, we seek to be your partner, help DOT through the process, to calm rhetoric and correct misinformation. To me, it seems the Chamber seeks to be a propaganda arm for the state. We've already been gaslit by the state, told we want something we do not want. We don't need a propaganda machine. We were betrayed by Marion County for a greed concealed in double talk, much like this letter. We do not need you to sugarcoat a public betrayal. You say you want a seat at the table, but the people want the table overturned. What more do we need to do to make this clear? Thanks.
Good job. Thank you very much.
Suzanne Eno, 9520 Southwest 193rd Circle, Donellen. Well, while people are talking about building, come in. The building will be around the exits. I do not think that it will increase the building in Donellen. In fact, or the business, I do not think it will increase the business in Donellen. I think it will decrease the business in Donellen because all of the exits are a ways away from Donellen. And if they're built up around, if businesses are built up around the exits, there will be no need to come into Donellen. So any traffic that would come through on 41 that gives us business will no longer be coming through for the most part. And the letter, it's clear to me that the letter has a go-ahead to build, that there is no-build intention in the letter. And our, our statement. And lastly, I am appalled by anyone on this council who gives any credence to the letter, especially Councilwoman Louise Kenny, Anita Williams, and Valerie Kachan.
Ms. Eno, you cannot direct comments to individuals like that.
I direct them to you, then.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, in the back there.
My name is Melanie Barker. I live at 8365 152nd Place. I'm all the way to Floridians where you don't think Donellen even exists. And everyone who is concerned about it, the turnpike coming through here, I will lose my home. And I encourage you to remember, everyone that will be displaced, because we can't afford to remain Floridians at that point. I understand that the representative from the Chamber has been put in a bull's eye here and she's taking it very well this evening and I commend her. There's no good answer. Keep your friends close and your enemies closer, I believe, is what the Chamber was going for. Have the inside scoop. Know what's going on. I feel like Florida Department of Transportation has been very cagey when I've reached out, asking them simply, where would you like me to move? When you look around at the housing market and now that their delay has gone into first quarter next year, I want to be optimistic that we're winning with our no-build order. I'm more concerned that they've just decided to wait for the housing market to slow down so that it can buy me out for less. I look at the northern part of my neighborhood being built up by a developer. He's building smaller houses on less land and he's asking $100,000 more than my house is worth. So I can't even move two blocks up the road. I loved Donellen. I moved here four years ago from Kansas and I started a business and I'm involved in many local businesses. And I know that we all have the no-build order, but perhaps approach it from another perspective. How many Floridians will you lose if this comes through? Because we can't afford to stay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Annette Stutzman, 204 Southwest 192nd Court, Donellen.
Annette Stutzman, 204 Southwest 192nd Court, Dunellen. As you know, we've been doing this a long time, and I for one am very upset by our chamber participating in this letter with a seat at the table. We, we are the true stakeholders, the people. It's not farmlands forever. It's, it's us, the people that are sitting in this room, in this town. We have asked for a seat at the table with FDOT. I cannot tell you how many times, behind the scene, we've been promised it will be soon, it will be soon, when is soon? As Mrs. Meyer said, no means no. The option number five is no build. It's on FDOT's page, the option number five is no build. Why are we talking about a seat at any table? We need to say no. They're trying to wear everybody down. We're just making us stronger, I can promise you. No means no.
Julian Mendozza, 11894 East Blue Cove Drive. I think the problem with signing a letter that you didn't write is that you didn't write it. And if we're gonna protect ourselves and our community, and most importantly, our environment, then we have to work together. Let's talk to each other. There's a lot of educated, interested people on the matter. Personally, when I misspeak or I fail to communicate my point effectively, I correct myself. Whether it's publicly or privately, I think it's important. So I would suggest that Dunellen Business Association consider providing a letter of clarification, because this isn't a seat at a table that we need.
Yes.
Amen.
Tim, did you want to speak?
Amen.
From just, kind of following up on Julian.
Name and address.
Tim Eskey, 12140 Maple Street, Dunellen. Sorry to know that. Kind of to follow up with what Julian is saying, definitely no build. But how do we help Judy, okay, understand? What guidance can we, can council give Judy? A lot of sharp lines in here, like Julian has said. My sentiment is, I believe Judy, or I'm sorry, yeah, I believe Judy shares the no-build sentiment, but got tangled up in this letter, okay? We've all been tangled up somewhere in our careers. And I believe that she just simply needs guidance, whatever that guidance is, so that she can help us or not get us in a bad situation, that type thing. That's, just like, that's it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Marty Williams. I'm a land surveyor. I've been in business in Dunellen for 40 years. I've seen this...
Address.
I'm sorry. Current address or old address?
Whatever.
But 7291 Southeast 196th Avenue, Morrison right now. But anyway, yeah, I've been here through thick and thin. I've been here through lots of subdivisions. I've been here through local businessmen. I've been here through everything else, but I've never seen anything like what's proposed come through here now. This will devastate this community, this county, this infrastructure, this waterways, these waterways, these, the livestock we have, including horses and cows. And you know what I'm talking about. It's just gonna come through here and just wipe us, they ain't gonna wipe us out, but it's really gonna hurt us. And I just, I want you guys to look at it, you know, 10 years from now, what it's gonna look like, or whenever they bring it through, because this is really gonna be bad. And, you know, we sit here now and talk about it, and it's like, oh, it's gonna be this and that, the other. But, you know, it's really gonna be bad. They'll bring a lot of money to the county, but it's really gonna be bad for all of us farmers and everybody else out here. And that's what this whole community is built upon. That's what this whole community is structured upon. That's what this whole community has always been structured upon. And we're gonna destroy it now? I hope not. I hope you don't let that happen to us. Please don't let it, because this is our farming community. This is our, this is where everybody wants to come to go to spring. This is where everybody wants to come. And if you let this come through, it's gonna ruin the spring. The, the, the water flow that, off this road is gonna get into aqua first, and then slowly, deep down, come into our, you're not gonna be able to recognize the springs. You're not. I mean, they're gonna get muddy in just a matter of, what, 10, 15, 20 years? Trust me, I studied it. So please don't let this come through. I trust you won't, and I respect you for that, and I hope you don't. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Just a clarification for everybody, that we have a jurisdiction over the city of Dunellen. This is a state project, and we as a city that's part of the state have taken a position. But ultimately, this decision is not the city's decision to make, but we have certainly used the name of Dunellen to let everyone in FDOT and in the legislature to know what the city's position is. So you don't have to convince us. We have already taken a strong statement, 100% no build. And there's no one on this council that I'm aware of that is waffling off of that position. Who else would like to speak?
The young lady in the black.
Jasmine Lovenga, 14051 Southeast 8th Street, Wilson, Florida. I'm here representing Levy, Marion, Citrus, and Silver County. And I've been in front of all, and at the last meeting, they told me to keep up the good work, okay? I'm here passing the word, running my credit cards up with gallons of ink, because these flyers are being spread statewide. Because this is a state issue, what you, what's damage is done here, not just county. Because this is just a sandbar, and if they keep drilling and building concrete and all this stuff, you have signals, you have a sink, it, it, it's, it's a slot. But what the word we're passing is that it's free, not need. And when you look at the back of flyer, I'm gonna give you a flyer, that, that, the real reason behind the Northern Termite Extension is that Enterprise Florida, for one, this, you know, they're telling us, you know, the commissioners are saying, we need this because there's traffic in Marion and hurricane evacuation to nowhere, the traffic they keep creating. But anyway, while they're doing that worldwide, it is being advertised that there are 28 million rural acres available for foreign developers. The only continent that doesn't have an office devoted to developing rural Florida is Australia. And so, in their sales pitches, our land is cheap, low taxes, and less restrictions. So it means, come on! And everyone's like, whoa, people living here, quit living here. Well, we have these foreign investor developers from Cuba and Canada and all this coming to bring their warehouses and all, to, with the poisons and whatever they want, because there's less restrictions. This is wrong. We should not sacrifice what's left, the little bit of green space, of rural Florida, and, and the nature coast, the wildlife corridor, so foreign developers can bury their money and, and, and slaughter Florida! For what? You know, concrete, concrete, concrete. When, what people don't realize, and I told them from the first commissioner meeting, we are not gonna lay down and swallow their lives in concrete and sacrifice, just lay it out, oh, because we need connectivity, we need hospitals. Is that man gonna come get you in a helicopter? And it's, it's just wrong. And see, this, this is their, this is how they wanna advertise the future of the Sunshine State. The one thing that's alive in there is the truck driver. And this, and everybody, you know, if they want it, you know, it's, it's a catastrophe of what they wanna do, and we are gonna keep fighting because it is wrong and we cannot, this isn't just for us. Once they destroy it, it's gone. And so you can't mitigate with nature, and, and they've been told over and over and over, we don't need these roads. Fix what you have. But now, oh, they wanna seat at the table or mitigate. And who are these chamber congressmen have the rights to, to try to sit at the table? I sent a certified letter to DeSantis with, with my castor five, two of them, certified, saying, it's still sitting in the mailroom from February that hasn't been signed for. And then, and then the FDOT meeting, they slid in at Levy this last week, and during the public comment time, the people, nobody knew they were coming. And then at the one Marion County meeting, the FDOT people, well, they got the public comment, who would've thought somebody put a match under their butts? Because they got up and they went. And it's real insulting to the people, because anything we write to the governor or Marion County Commissioners is automatically forwarded to FDOT. And they were above, and they walk out and bowled out, said, listen to us, it's wrong. We wanna hear them. And anyway, I got lots of flyers, I've got buttons, and then someone else, you, what'd you tell me? Tell them, that there's a meeting tomorrow in Citrus County. Yeah, I went to the wrong address, that's why I was late. I've been out here without my signs, you guys see me? And so, you know, we're gonna be there strong, I know where I'm going. And so, I appreciate that you, I admire and respect, because you from the jump start, you know, remember you had one under the Christmas tree, and, and everybody, we were so proud of you. You had a real meeting, there were people who were allowed to talk. They didn't just go, oh, process, 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 ma'am, ma'am, you know, shut up, you know? It says they share a contract, this is wrong! You know, I respect that! And then I'm, anyway, Levy County, and I went to Yankee Town, and that night, they did the no build too. You know? And so we've got, we've got several of them, and the Inver people, please do not let these chamber congresspeople who wanna pave Florida, and they wanna pay, you know, everybody wants to pay from Orlando, the business people, not the people. They wanna pay from Orlando to Tallahassee. And that is bold, people come here to get away with the beauty and the wildlife and all that. We should sacrifice for that? Thank you, darling. Thank you. Everybody here, you know, my, DeSantis, the chairman of the board in Enterprise Florida, he rules the board, the people don't even like to sit on the floor. So, I think you, thank you.
Someone asks me a week from now what speech I'll remember most.
Thank you. We can't let them get away with this. You know? We can't. You know, like I said, Levy County, they told me, come back any time you want it, and keep on paying for no build. Bam, bam, first time I love. Thank you.
I guess I should go.
And if anybody wants to sign, I got a carload of them, 1125, I got a $7 donation. Thank you.
Great work, Sean.
Yes, yes.
Just a major cheek and hat trick, de capo.
Okay. So you, uh, let's get back to, let's, yes, sir. Name and address.
Michael Murratt, 3630 Gossam Drive, Fort Myers, Florida. Representative here for Florida to give my comments. First of all, I just wanna thank this council. I mean, folks, my, all of us, but you all were the first one actually to take a position on this entire work on termite extension, on what's entire alternative order or by which this is going to take. Well, I really did set the example for all the local governments in the area, and now we've seen, you know, obviously Levy English County, most recently, the Inverness City Council also joining you in that effort to create legal resolutions to provide formal input to FDOT and for Termite Enterprise. So, just three things I wanted to kind of, you know, mention here, I mean, Jasmine alluded to Twitter comments earlier, but tomorrow there is gonna be a very important meeting within Silver County, where their county commission is going to be having a public workshop on the Northern Termite Extension. And it's expected that they will be taking a position on that. You know, I think it would be great to, you know, see folks from Dunellen who are elected officials, who've served as that sort of peer model as well, provide some input, as well as, you know, neighbors who are also in this, in this fight together, and also who want to show that, you know, we can all go out on the no-build option together, we need to really be prioritizing upgrading our existing infrastructure as opposed to creating new greenfield corridors with the Northern Termite Extension. The second thing I just also encourage folks, right, is I know that, you know, now probably there are various Marion or the county commissioners about this, is, you know, why isn't that, we can't get one of these public input workshops scheduled here in Marion County as well, right? We have not seen a formal presentation towards, you know, the county commission with, with Marion regarding the, with representatives from Florida Termite Enterprise or from, you know, for folks bills, to kind of have that forum for public input be gathered for that. So it might be something that, you know, you all might want to reengage with, with the Marion Board of County Commissioners. The third thing I just also wanna close with is that, you know, we did organize a business sign-on letter within the No Build Room Coalition within Citrus County, where we were able to gather a lot of signatures from local businesses who'd be impacted by the routes that go through Citrus County. We have more than a couple, a couple dozen businesses sign on to that, or more than, more than 30 businesses sign on to that. And, you know, this is actually addressed also to Josh Woodin from the Citrus County Chamber of Commerce. And I feel this letter actually, the way it's actually kind of pre-armed some of that that they knew was going on, or, you know, what they're hearing from the business community. And I'd be happy to work with Judy and also other local business owners here in Dunellen, also Marion County, to kind of, really kind of raise, you know, that concern as well for, for business owners here, that, you know, they are actually for the no-build option, and that they do want a seat at the table, and they want to provide that input or the preference for the no-build alternative. That's all I, also have to say, and thank you again for your time today and also private input. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wants to speak? Yes, ma'am?
Hi there. My name is Ann Marie Sikorsky. Please bear with me.
And address.
I've been having some laryngitis issues.
And your address?
My address is 328 Burley Avenue, Holly Hill or Daytona Beach, Florida. I've come across the state to talk to you about this serious matter. I was born and raised in Clearwater, Florida in 1952. I come from four generations of Floridians. My father and some other gentlemen were involved with starting the first television station in Tampa. It was Channel 13, CBS affiliate. It's now a Fox channel, I believe. However, we also had deep sea fishing boats and party boats. I mean, we, we definitely catered to tourists and whatnot. Florida, I mean, Clearwater, when my parents moved there in the late '40s, was a town of only several thousand people, maybe five or six thousand people. There was a definite distinct amount of land in between Tarpon Springs, Dunedin, Clearwater, Largo, Seminole, and St. Petersburg. When I left to go to college in 1970, they were starting to build upper and lower levels of US 19. You all know what Pinellas County looks like now, and it's moved further north all the time. I've been in Daytona Beach for 21 years. It was, still has some charm to it as a town, even with its crazy rival history and, you know, reputation. It still is a small town, but we have been devoured by urban sprawl. It's totally losing its character. Harmon Beach was a wonderful community, had a real village feel, like your Dunellen sports. And it's all gone. The county, the city commissioners are nothing like you all. You, you are to be commended for what you've, the stand that you've taken. And that's why I wanted to come across the state and tell you how much I appreciate it. And yes, while you are only in charge of the city and not FDOT or the state, and we all know this is at a much larger level. This Florida enterprise corporation, they are nothing more than promoters and land speculators or promoters for land speculation. Your whole atmosphere will forever change. We spent a lot of time up here on the Rainbow River, and I just really wanna thank you for what you've done. And in closing, I wanna say that your Chamber of Commerceperson, Judy, while she meant well, you have made it quite clear over the years that you cherish your small town, wonderful water, reputation, and you wanna keep it that way. And the chamber has a responsibility to listen to the people out there that's running the city. And you've made it quite clear, she, it's time for someplace that's small to really stand up like you have and said, look, we know what we have, and we don't want anything else. So that's, that's it. I'll be at the Inverness, Inverness B OCC meeting. It would be wonderful if some of your staff or other people could come and speak.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
This is what we believe. And send that copy of that letter to all the directors. And just let them, we'll explain to the chamber what our position is and why. So I feel comfortable with that, but as far as asking them to
Mandy.
Take something back, I think that's overstepping our bounds. So we do have a motion and we do have a second to ask the chamber to rescind or to modify their letter. Is there any further discussion? Okay, this motion will be, if you vote yes, you want them to, you're asking them to write a letter. If you vote no, you're staying, you're staying out of it for now. Okay? It's clear. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
What's my caveat?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
You made the motion. You said that we, as a council, need to direct the staff at the chamber to rescind that letter. We're saying, we agree with you, however, we don't have that position, so we voted in the negative review.
Okay. With that said, I would like to ask council if you would be comfortable, certainly you would get a copy of it before it's sent, for me to write a letter to the chamber to reiterate what our position is and to clarify to the chamber what our position is and why.
Can I make a recommendation that we just go ahead and send them the, I always get my word, is it referendum that we did?
Resolution.
Resolution, sorry. If we send them the resolution, say please read. That this is our statement.
That would make it easier, I wouldn't have to write a letter.
That's why you pay me the big bucks.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I'd just like to make one more comment.
Yes.
This is to Judy directly. Again, as I started before, I know where your heart is. You stepped in a pile of poop inadvertently. Okay, sometimes poop is a very good thing. We use for fertilizer and grow things. And I think what happened today just proves that our community, even though every individual is so different, we have something in common, okay? And that poop you stepped in is just going to help this community grow in a direction that's going to be favorable, not just to us, but generations coming. Again, please don't take this personal. I love what you're doing for this community. You have proved again and again your dedication and your hard work. Okay, you stepped in a pile of poop and we're going to use it as fertilizer. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Odom. She may not totally agree that what her organization did is something that needs to be apologized for, taken back. So the assumption that she is conceding is an assumption that we do not know. So does everybody feel good that we just send them a copy of our resolution with maybe a little note by me?
That's fine. That's fine. Can we ask everybody, what's the lead? Go ahead and leave now.
Okay, everybody, we aired it out for you. We really appreciate it. It was an opportunity for you to prepare what you're going to say when the state finally allows you to speak to them sometime in the future. So those that are done with your business, you can leave now. We'll take a couple minute break while everybody clears out of your. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Same for Alton.
Okay, everyone, we're about ready to start back. We took a 10-minute break from 6:50 to 7 o'clock to allow the people that needed to leave to vacate. We're going to now, Vice Mayor Hanchard has suggested that she may have to leave a little early. So we're going to get to an item that I'm sure she definitely wants to be part of. And this would be back to item number one, which we had jumped over to discuss the letter. So item number one is agreement number AGR 2022-19, contract to purchase vacant lot on Powell Road, parcel number 3350-071-000. So Ms. Odom, are you going to lead us on this?
Yes, sir. So Andrew did prepare a contract as council directed during the last council meeting that was presented to the agent for the seller with the stipulation that there would be a 60-day due diligence period. They have counter offer with a 30-day due diligence period with a closing date sometime in July. And Andrew does have a copy of that version of the counter offer that he has reviewed. I think it's pretty much exactly the same with the exception of the due diligence period and the proposed closing date.
It had the extraction of the liabilities.
Yes, which Andrew had extracted initially, yes.
So Mr. Hand, is it, you're going to speak or is it Georgina's turn?
I can speak to it if council would like me to.
Please.
But the copy I received looks, looks fine, just with the dates changed, just as Mandy stated. I don't have any other comments other than the date. If the effective date is tomorrow, of course, then you have a month for due diligence. That runs sort of an odd date after the next council meeting. But council can always call a special meeting if it needs to address something prior to the due diligence date. That's the only, only comment I have.
Ms. Sid, do you have any updates on the property itself, the viability of it, if it needs a retention pond or anything like that? Are we going to do that during our due diligence?
I don't have any information on that. As far as the retention pond, we would have to get professional assistance with that, maybe a survey or something.
Yeah. So I think one of the, one of the questions that council grappled with was there's no question that this lot size is big enough for the proposed building. And it's certainly big enough for the accompanying parking that would go with it. However, if there's a retention area that would be required, then it may, you know, it may cause an issue, we don't know. So I would be hopeful, that's one reason we wanted the 60-day due diligence period, that we would have an opportunity to answer all those questions in a organized and timely way. So my question then would be to you or staff, is 30 days enough time for us to do the due diligence and to run this back toward the planning commission within a 30-day period?
I think that would be enough, yes.
What did you say, Mr. Hand, about scheduling a special meeting that would be based on, if they, if they're asking for 30 days and if we need 40 because of the timing of the meetings, you know, that's, that's something we can ask for. We don't have to automatically agree to 30. We can say, we need 40, we need those extra days to tie into our next meetings. Just throwing that out there.
Ms. Ray, if I may. A for a normal vacant land or commercial inspection, 30 days isn't normal. However, I understand that, like if we have, is our first workshop on July 6? I never can remember if it's the, yes, it should be on July 6. But it's kind of in the same train of thought, because that's what I've just doodling over here. So if we could maybe even do like a special city council meeting before our workshop on July 6 to discuss the due diligence that's been received, and then that way we could vote to go forward or to cancel and then do our normal workshop is what I would maybe recommend.
Yeah, because the proposed closing date in the counter offer is honored before July 8. So that would be the Friday following that.
Well, there would, I mean, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Okay, I'm so sorry, my little real estate hat's going on. In all honesty, we would not be able to close by July 8. That's just not, I mean, I know that they're already doing their, like, their lien searches and municipal lien searches and this, because those take, those items do take probably about 15 days right now in this market. But even if we voted on it on the 6th, to get everybody, you know, to get the documents over to you, to get reviewed, I mean, there's just no way that I think we would be able to close on July 8. Maybe July 20th. I hate closing on Wednesdays, by the way, because if there's an issue, you can't fix it. So by the next business day. So if we could close during a day, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, after the 8th, that would be my recommendation. Does that make sense, Andrew?
So you're proposing a closing date on before the 13th? Or 14th?
Yeah, I'd say so. That should be a, enough time, if we, if it's all good. Is that enough time for you to review? Because it should take them about two, maybe three days to get all the closing documents together.
Sure, to review the closing documents. That's, that's fine. The only thing I think I would tell council or just advise council to keep in mind is what you've received here is a counter offer. So if you make another offer, it does terminate where you, basically if you were to accept this tonight, then you have a contract. But if you counter offer to them, they may propose another counter offer to you. So I don't know where that leaves council as far as a timeline, if, if the dates don't work for them and they then present some alternate dates.
And what you're suggesting is we would have to have another?
No, because we have, no, we have another city council meeting coming up on the 8th, June 8th. Or we could always call the agent right now and ask him to call the owner or just ask him if that would be acceptable.
Could deal with it that way, or if you wanted to provide authority to city clerk, you know, for arrange to deal with dates and find dates that work, then that would be another way to deal with it.
Delegate that authority to Ms. Odom.
If I help her if she needs it?
Yeah.
Staff, I mean, is council okay with that?
What, what date are we talking about?
Well, we would still go with the 30 days, but we would propose a closing date on before July 14th.
No, ma'am. We would go with the due diligence to July 6, because we don't have a city council meeting before, we don't have a city council meeting on June 24th.
Okay, so that would be through July 6.
And then have a proposed closing on July 14th.
On before July 14th.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And if they come back with our counter and you, and they agree to that, then would you authorize the mayor to go ahead and sign that contract?
Yeah, but, but we're also authorizing you to look at different dates. If they say, can we do it, you know, I don't know. That was your idea. I like my idea better.
You could authorize it, but you'd have to allow it within a certain range, obviously.
How many extra days is the vice mayor proposing for our due diligence?
12 days.
12 extra days.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. On the 24th.
I would be very amazed if the sellers would not be receptive to that, that ask, knowing that they should realize we have procedures that we have to go through as a governance. Question becomes is if they say no, you know, what do we do?
Well, we can always have a special work city council meeting, which we all love. When's our, when's our budget meetings?
I don't have the calendar. Frankly, I think the first one is June 23rd.
That's the day before.
And I'd have to look at the calendar. I can look real quick.
That's a Thursday?
No, it should be Wednesday.
Is it, is it possible to, because we have another item to discuss, is it possible someone can make a phone call while we're discussing?
Does the council give me permission to go make a phone call? Does Andrew need to be in the room with me?
It's actually going to be conveyed as a counter offer, so. I'm just, if you're, if you're delegated with it, it may just be something you want to try to call and so the public can hear it as part of the meeting.
You can call them and put them on speakerphone?
I mean, if it's not a, I think it would be best if it's a member of staff. And if, you know, there's not a negotiation, it's just, are these dates okay? And then you come back to council, then you have the sunshine issues.
So I can do that?
Best if it was a member of staff.
Okay, okay, you want his number?
I have his number. Do you want me to go ahead and? Tom Riley?
Yeah, but just go and ask him, I guess.
Well, let me, let me just call him and ask him if he's available.
Yeah, that'd be the other idea.
Okay.
Can I just hold up the meeting now until everybody gets back? You could go on to the next item. Just, you would need to take public comment, obviously, before any decisions made, but you won't be able to make a decision until.
Do the public comment now or wait till they come back?
You could take public comment on this issue now.
Okay. That's a good way of taking care of something needing, buying it some time.
Sorry.
Okay. So here, here we have, we have public, I'm going to ask for public comment on the purchase of the Powell property. Is there anyone who has signed up that would like to speak to?
I predict Marty Williams will speak to this.
Well, first, is anybody signed up to speak to? Item number one.
I don't have anybody else to speak to.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to item number one? This is the purchase of the Powell property.
I can speak to it.
Okay. Come on up, sir.
I thought you wanted to speak about it earlier.
I did.
Okay, don't confuse me, Marty.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry I called that.
It's getting light.
Okay. The Powell property, the, first, I don't, I'm going to ask everybody if you've done a feasibility study, if this is conducive to what you want to build, how much money you want to build, how much asphalt you want to put in, how many DRAs or how much DRA you want to put in, and all that, first. Second, you need to get an engineering study. You need to get a topographic study. You need to get a environmental study on the entire property. A drainage study of how much water is running off the road into the property, how much water you're going to have to retain, and how much water you're going to drain into other infrastructure you already have. Third, you have sewer, existing sewer on the line. So you got to, what is the existing subsewer levels? How are you going to introduce that to where you have in the city and what you're going to do about it? There's a lot of things to look at. And I don't think it's a 30 or 60 day study. It may be a 60 day study minimum, but certainly not a 30 day study. And I've been through thousands of them. But that's just my comment on it. I mean, from what I've heard.
Much appreciated. Anyone else want to make a comment? Okay. All public comments are over on the Powell property.
So do we want to go to the?
Yeah, let's go while we're getting the information. We're going to go now for a discussion of boat launch parking fees to get everybody up to speed on that. As many of you may know, that the city did not renew our lease with the state as far as the control and the management of the ramp that's real here, right here at City Hall, and the parking area that is part of. So the city now is in control. The nice thing about us being in control, we can start to charge boat launch fees or parking fees to help maintain this area. Most other areas now, municipal areas are charging fees for boat launch. We've already discussed this and staff has come back with a recommendation that we consider an outfit, I believe, called precision parking, which is actually a outfit that is somewhat similar to Sunpass in that they use cameras to photograph your license tag. You make your payment and they track whether or not you have paid or not, and will fine you if you haven't. We got a positive review by the staff. Mandy and I went to Citrus County and we visited two ramps that have that program in place. It's been about three weeks ago. And although it is as it's purported to be, my feeling was it did not run as smoothly as it had been described to us.
I can't talk anymore.
Is that pretty much all right? I still, I have one more minute.
Let's, let's keep it on here.
So anyway, the, it kind of goes like this. You pull up in your boat. There's an area right there that you get your phone and you flash your phone on it and you have an app that automatically pays there and then you're good. If you don't do that and you just go into the water and it takes a picture, you will receive a fine. What we found when Mandy and I were there, there were four boats that were putting in and two people were getting ready to launch without using their phone, thinking that it was like Sunpass, that they will bill you after the fact. So they just assumed if they got into the boat and left, they would get a bill in the mail and they would pay it. Little did they know that they were getting ready to get a fine. So I found that very disturbing that out of the four people, two of them were about ready to get a fine for that. Secondly, one person that hadn't used it before was trying to figure out how to do it. Now you have to keep in mind, our boat ramp has one ramp. You know how busy it can be on a Saturday afternoon. If you have one person who has backed their boat into that area and they're sitting there not being able to figure out how to do this, whether it's they're not being familiar with smartphones and how that apparatus works, or the sun is so bright that you cannot see your screen, which happens. So anyway, any, any delay for you to make a pay, you're going to be sitting there preventing anybody else from getting in there. So I, I saw problems with that. Also, I don't like the idea that this company charges fines that they keep until their initial investment is paid off. I don't know what the fines were, but I heard, seems like my mind remembers, that the fines were $100.
For Crystal River?
Yep.
That's $250 for the first violation.
$250.
So that's for Crystal River instead, Mr. Mayor.
So what that meant, out of the four boats that were getting ready to launch that Mandy and I witnessed, two people were ready to go, thinking that they were just going to get a bill in the mail, and little did they know that they were getting ready for a $250 fine. I, I don't want any part of anything like that. So it seems like a, almost like a red light camera situation, where the purpose of it is to collect revenue from people who make mistakes.
Mr. Mayor, Jan?
Yeah.
Can Jan say something real quick?
Yes.
I've reached out to the company to discuss the program in general and the feelings, the thoughts, that it was like a red light camera program. And they're going to come back with a proposal that, that I kind of talked with them briefly about, that I'd like to bring back in June, the June workshop, that you all may be more amenable to, where it's not a fine, you know, nowhere in the near range of $100, $50, looking more along the lines of, okay, you didn't pay the launch fee, so you'll pay an extra $10 this time, for example. That's just an example. But something that would be more amenable, more that if somebody wanted, didn't want to sign up for a pass or a fee that day, they'd pay a little extra more, but it's not really a fine.
Okay.
And it's not, it wouldn't be, if, if they don't pay anything and they get a notice in the mail, it won't say, notice of violation. It'll be more like the Sunpass notification to pay. But the company does not do billing, so it won't be really like the Sunpass option.
Well, my, my question to that is, if this particular company has the technology that from a photo of a license tag, that they can send you a notice of a fine, it would follow that that same tech, technology can send you a notice of a payment?
But they're not in the business to bill, so they don't want to, to make that a routine, so to speak. It's, if it happens, they do send out a notice, but they don't want people to get in the habit of, oh, we're just not going to pay today and we're going to wait until we get a bill.
The other, the other possibility is to have a kiosk with a credit card swipe, right?
That absolutely.
Everybody knows how to do that.
That is absolutely.
If you've ever filled up your gas tank, you know how to do that.
That is absolutely a possibility. The capital fee that they would need to recoup for that is more than what they would need to recoup for these cameras. I don't have an exact fee, but there's a difference approximately of maybe $3,000 or $4,000 that they would need to recoup for a kiosk. But it's something for council to consider. I will bring back different options.
But the recovery is based on a collection of fines?
No, it would have to be something different. They still need, either way, for this program to work on either side, they need a way to recover their investment. That's just a.
So you're going to come with another proposal?
I will come with a couple different options that you all could consider, including a kiosk.
So I'll just conclude in my summary, and Mandy, you can say what you want, because you were there with me. There will be problems with us having the one ramp and having anybody who is delayed trying to get into the water because they can't figure out how to pay, because there's no other way to get in there.
That's going to be anywhere.
And it has to be very easy. It can't be where, like I say, in, at 12 noon, when that sun in the middle of summer is hitting a smartphone and you're having to read what you're supposed to do or whatever, you're going to find people are going to be standing there not knowing what to do. And it says you can call a number. Now, you, can you imagine you're standing there with five other vehicles trying to wait to get in and you're dialing an 800 number trying to get a direction?
Definitely problematic. And the site where we went, they have four launches, where we have one. And two of the boats, well, one was a pair of jet skis and the other was a boat that was actually already in the water, so you couldn't get another boat in that, to launch at that slip until they were done paying and got back in their boat and left.
I thought they could put in their tag number once they got parked and put it in.
If they know about it in advance. What we found, the problem was, they weren't paying attention to the signage. And they were launching and then about to leave, and then we were just walking around asking people questions about, you know, what do you think about the program? And they were like, what program?
So you say people hunted it that day?
So we did. We did. So that was.
So that's, that's my report, so we'll just put this for a report in.
In June 1st.
And just real, real quick, as I was driving the other day by Walmart, I saw on the back of the truck, they weren't carrying a boat, but they had a yellow sticker, it's October on it, it said boat ramp, boat ramp ticket or fee, you know, it was a little yellow boat ramp sign, so they must have, they must have been able to get it. And I couldn't figure out where it was from. And then I did find one of those big parking lot signs, I mean, it was big, says pay parking lot park, pay by text app, but it had the big, you know, big app one, and then it had the phone number. And it happened to be, I wasn't looking for it, but it happened to be Premium Parking with their phone number underneath. So, but it was a big sign. I mean, if they didn't see that, I don't know what they were doing. But anyway, so, yeah, let's go on, but. But let's do it again in June.
The issue, once you have it figured out and you've done it, you're good to go. The problem is the first timers that show up that are trying to figure this out. And I know on any given Saturday, we've all seen it. I've seen cars and trailers backed up where they can't even get out off of 41 in order to get into the parking lot. So any delay like that would be a disaster. Okay, so we're going to come back to that next month. Ms. Odom, what is the news?
Did we have, I think we might have had somebody here specifically to comment about that?
Did someone want to comment on that? Sure, please, come on up, I'm sorry. Reason, I didn't think of that. We didn't make a motion or anything, so go ahead.
My name's Allison Paletto, and I live on 20874 River Drive and also have another house on Walnut Street. I just moved here, I have had a house in homeless status for years, and it's just too chaotic there. Anyways, so we moved here. The problem with this system is, it goes off your boat trailer. So if you want to buy an annual pass, that means I have four boats. And then also, now, when I have to pull my boat in and out of the water, I got to pay to go put gas in it. So I guess I'll just carry gas down to my dock and spill gas in the water. You know what I mean? It's like, it's just, I don't like, I'm fine with the charging per se, but on your vehicle, not your boat. And that's what they're doing, they're charging you on your boat.
We can have an option to take the boat numbers or a trailer. The trailer, the tag.
Well, no, it needs to be on the vehicle, because what's the difference? I mean, the.
It's up to the agency to decide how they want their program to run. We can do either, as long as it's registered with the state of Florida, where.
But each boat, each boat has its own trailer. So it's not like you're sharing a trailer for an airboat from a fast boat to it.
But each boat has its own number.
Right.
That's what I'm talking about. We can take it right off the boat, the numbers on the boat, or the trailer. It's up to council to decide how they want.
But that doesn't matter, because.
What she's saying, you have. You have four different trailer tags, is that what you're saying?
Yes, four different boats that sit on their own trailer with their own trailer tag. So unless I illegally swap my trailer tag out, pay an annual pass, that's what I would have to do.
I believe with Crystal River, you can, with an annual pass, you can have up to two registered tags under one annual pass.
Okay.
And so that would also be a decision of the council. If you are going to buy an annual pass, whether you're a resident or a non-resident, how many tags you're allowed to register under that annual pass.
Right.
So that is, that is something that can be.
Do we have a cost on that either? I mean, it's going to be a mess. I mean, I could tell you it's going to be a mess.
Your point is really well taken, because this is a minutia you plug in after the fact.
Right, and it's going to open a can of worms. You're concerned about people not being able to do it. I mean, I have an old iPhone and I can't even put my Walmart app on it. So, you know, it's like, your husband, put this on your Android, you know, and do this. And I don't see these a lot of people being able to handle that.
All right, thank you, thank you for bringing that to our table.
And also, if I own two houses and pay city taxes, then it's kind of like, seems a little unfair that, and the tour operators. And then will we also, I've got 10 seconds. The parking, is somebody going to monitor the parking when all the cars are parking and the boat trailer parking? I mean, how is this going to help us other than just charging?
That is something I have talked over with the chief. And he has told me he's very confident something like that his department can do.
And real quick, in Texas, a lot of the core boat ramps, they have honor boxes with little tags you put in your car. I know that would be someone would have to monitor, but it keeps people pretty honest. And it, you know, it's a lot more polite.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak to boat launches? Yes.
Hi, I'm Ed Mann of 14 Northwest 20th Avenue in Dunellen. I'm a kayaker. So how are you defining a boat? Is it a powered craft or is it a personal watercraft? Because obviously, we don't use the ramp, but we use the part of the ground or, you know, there's a sloping area that we launch from. But we park in the same area. So would we then be subject to a parking fee even though we're not using the ramp? And then my next question is, where are these fees going? A lot of times, they justify the fees by saying they will maintain the ramps and the launch area through the fees. But if we're not using the ramp and we're paying fees, then we're paying for something, a service that we're not, we're not getting. So it's a question, really, it's not a statement.
Okay. Troy, you could speak to how the fees would be used.
Yes. First of all, I wouldn't encourage that kayakers or canoeers are using the raw riverbanks because of the erosion factor. But I understand what you're saying. But the fee collection will be for the entire Centennial Park. It can be used to support all the components of the boat launch. The bathrooms, the driveways, the parking. We can use it towards increasing parking to support the larger volume of use in the future. So all the fees collected here have to be used for this park, for a park that this one is in supporting of.
Just going back to you.
Waterpark for boat crafts.
I mean, I don't know what kind of boat that you have, but if you have a fiberglass kayak, launching a kayak from a boat ramp when you've got six people trying to load their powerboats is very difficult.
Certainly understand, yes, sir.
So, and then the other question is, will there be, if eventually this does happen, will there be any type of a pass or a discount for local residents?
So the, I've heard that twice now from you and one other and a few others around the city about being taxpayers and then having to use or pay for the boat ramp. But if we start collecting our fees, and council will stop me at any time if I speak out of turn, but the purpose of collecting fees is to take the burden off of the taxes so that the boat ramp is self-supporting.
Point.
So will there be a concomitant reduction in taxes then as a result of it?
No, because right now we have no taxes.
Troy, let me just, just like we do over at the city beach, the city residents, we give them like two passes for each home. We can surely work something out, however, you know. But it's, we haven't gotten into details yet. But we do take into consideration that we're all taxpayers.
I know Crystal River, I don't live there, but I understand in certain circumstances, they don't give passes or discounts to local residents, which doesn't make any sense to me.
Thank you very much.
That's a good point, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your comment.
Can I comment on that?
I would just like to remind council that during public comment, we listen to the comments and only ask questions if there's a compelling reason. And then when we get to the council comments, we can comment on that too. Get into a back and forth like that will really bog down the meetings.
Sorry about that, my apologies.
Okay. All right, anyone else that would like to speak to the boat ramp fees?
Can we go back to the.
Okay, so we'll address that council again next month. All right, we're going back to item number 11, which is the motion to purchase the Powell property. Yes, what did you find out, Ms. Odom?
So, for the record, I did call Tom Riley with Colwell Banker, who is the seller's agent. He asked me to text him the counter. And my text to him says, "Tom, the city council is proposing a counter in extra 12 days for due diligence, which would be July 6 with a closing date on or before July 14." He texts me back, "Calling now." And a few minutes later, he texts me again. They agreed to the bill of changes. "Tom Riley, Colwell Banker, please confirm receipt." And I responded and said, "Thank you, Tom, received." So they have accepted the offer, according to my messages from Tom.
Good job, good job. So what I would say to that is, if we get to that deadline and we're seeing that we're not, we don't have the information we need, we're not painted into a box. Because before the 42 days, we can say no, correct?
Correct, yes, so we can back out.
So there's no risk to us. If we come back to them and say we need another week before we get this particular study, they can either say yes and extend it, or they can say no and the whole thing is over with. So there's no, there's no downside to this. Okay. All right, so we got that concession, which is a good thing, good job. We need a, have we had a motion and a second yet? Do we have a motion to purchase the Powell property for $85,000 with the terms that have been expressed?
So moved, with the corrections to the counter offer.
Correct. We have a second. Okay, council, here's your chance to discuss before a hard vote is taken. Ms. Kenny?
Naturally.
I know you want to comment.
Yes, what I find a little bit confusing for me personally is that at the planning meeting that we were recently at, it seemed that the police chief had some very clear direction that did not include the purchase of this property. So please explain to me what happened at the planning commission. That way I can make a decision. But I can't make a decision, and the chair is here, maybe she could be helpful.
Chief, do you want to speak to, I mean, I was at the planning commission meeting also. And there was a different alternative brought up that you spoke to that you seemed to be at that time excited about.
Well, I can speak.
Yes.
We had a meeting today with Patrick. And it appears that because the lot next to us, the easement, belongs to Gary's Carpet, we cannot use her property to come on to the PD if it was to build that building there. And also, there's a drainage retention area out front, so we would not be able to put a driveway in there. So we have done our due diligence to find out that we could not, right now, put that building on the city at the present police location.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
Then if she were to relinquish that issue on her side, would that, would it work? I don't know.
Well, I don't know neither. It would be up to the council and to my opinion, y'all vote.
I'm talking about the owner of that property. If the owner of the property was to rescind the requirement that she, isn't that, you spoke to it, mayor, in terms of the boundaries?
Yes, what seems to be important in this concept of building a new building on the current site in the parking area, it seems to be, only works if we had control of the driveway that is in between Gary's Carpet and the police station. Right now, it is my understanding that that alleyway is owned by Gary's Carpet. And not having the use of that alleyway or the building in the parking would be problematic. That is my understanding.
That's correct.
The cloud on the title, so to speak, regarding the driveway, is something that she actually owns it. Would she not be able to sell it?
Possibly.
I mean, I'll go to the attorney, but you usually can't separate parcels of certain sizes.
Oh, yeah, you can, the property creator does it all the time, but the.
But, but, and still have legal, and still have enough access and parking and such and so forth for the buildings of size. So I mean, there's a whole bunch of.
It was given up for an easement for the fire department. That's what the alleyway is for, is an easement for the fire department.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was a part of her property.
Well, it's her.
It's an easement for the fire department, so I don't know how we could take the easement away.
Well, it is her property. You can own property that has an easement.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So that's, that's it.
So, but.
Right?
Yes. Okay, but so as our property stands right now, we cannot do anything. Okay?
Correct.
Something that we don't know anything about.
Yes.
So.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion, a second. Discussion has happened. Time for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, pass is 4 to 1.
Everybody, thank you.
Okay, wait a second. You all, you got to go.
I got it, yes, we have, yes, I love y'all, peace out. I would thank you all in Colorado. My apologies for leaving, but I also have a family. Have them with a mobile, I never want to make them mad.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll go to the council comments right now. Ms. Cabbage, she had a comment?
I won't be here next month. I won't be able to do Zoom either because of the nature of my surgery. I won't be able to sit for longer than 15 or 20 minutes at a time. But I wanted to ask our attorney, if there comes a time when there's a vote, an important issue, could I somehow connect via phone and be part of the conversation?
Yes, and that is something that has come up in the past in the city. And ultimately, that's a decision and a determination made by council in the event of extraordinary circumstances. You could ask your fellow council persons to allow you to attend by phone remotely. And that would be fine so long as there's a physical quorum present.
And could they go ahead and make that motion tonight, if we have the June meetings?
Yes.
Okay, Jan is going in for surgery, will miss the June meeting. Do we have a motion to allow her to participate under the extraordinary circumstances? Ms. Kenny, yes, second?
Sir.
Any discussion? All in favor?
If it is by motion, it should be also public comment.
Okay, public comment. That's right, do it by the book. Thank you, attorney. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, it's not. Any other council comments?
None.
The only one I have is just to get a clarification on the resolution of our no-build that we were, agreed to send to the Dunellen Chamber. I would recommend we also send the CEP and the Citrus County Chamber too. You okay with that? And they should, it's a three-party letter, so they should all receive that. All right, that's my council comments. Mandy, department head reports?
I don't have anything prepared this evening, mayor. I don't have anything specific. Oh, there is one thing that, I'll let the others go ahead and then I'll say what I got.
Okay, well, that's what, when I went towards you, it's for you to delegate who you want to speak.
I only have one thing I want to say.
Okay, who, which one are you? Troy?
Yes, just tomorrow, there will be some minor water interruptions along the Ohio Street project, between Ohio Street, Chestnut, Walnut, and possibly along the park. FGUA will be moving and cutting water lines in preparation for doing paving. So it should be done tomorrow. But if you get calls, that's what it's about. Other than that, I have no other updates.
Ms. Odom?
Georgina?
I have nothing to report.
I just have one thing, council. Some of you may be aware, as far as vacation rentals go, I know that's been a topic, a topic here, and of course, a hot topic in the state. Right now, there is, there's an ordinance that has gone through planning based on Collier County's ordinance, which would, if approved by city council, create a registration process. Between the planning commission meeting and the special meeting, some of the residents who have been experiencing issues provided city staff with some information regarding some of the specific issues that they're facing and have requested additions onto that ordinance. And discussing with the staff, those additions can be made to make the ordinance to cover some areas such as occupancy and, and it's part of the registration process. So I think those changes will be made and they'll be going through planning before it comes back to council, unless council wants that to happen any other way.
So, the statement is, Georgina and council is going to start taking a hard look at the vacation rentals that are going on in the city, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that is something many residents have asked us to take a look at, and we're gonna do that. Okay, does that conclude? The department head reports?
Unless, chief, chief?
Chief?
Don't forget about chief.
What? Hello, we're gonna give you two shots, chief.
Well, I have some good news. I never had that news. Over the weekend, the Marine Patrol issued several citations to jet skis for speeding. We also issued citations to one boat for speeding, accumulated a lot of beer, not for personal consumption, but for boats who did not realize that they could not have beer, potato chips, and all this unless it was in the right container. So the Marine Patrol was, God bless you. So the Marine Patrol did a superb job this weekend with their, with the Marine Patrol. We also had a very large burglary this weekend in Dunellen Heights, many thousands of dollars. Thanks to Megan and James Roberts, Megan actually found the telephone that was not in the right place, and she called 911 from it, got the address of the owner, and come to find out, the owner of that phone had dropped it after he did the burglary. And we recovered all the property, and the burglar was a convicted felon, he had the rifle from the house, and we charged him with armed burglary and possession of firearm by convicted felon, plus the golf cart, plus two bicycles, plus all the property in the house. So, we very busy over the weekend, so, all again.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Yes.
One thing.
Yes, Ms. Odom.
Couple months ago, when Loretta Schaefer was here for one of our meetings with the TDC group, she made an observation out in front of City Hall, and made a suggestion that what, how nice it would look if we had a mural up on the gable out front. So, the mayor and I talked about it, and he asked me to contact the Rainbow Springs Art Group to see if there was somebody that could do such a mural. And I did receive a phone call from a lady by the name of Erin Sorensen, who is a member of the Rainbow Springs Art Group, who did a conceptual design, but it's not, doesn't come free, she is a paid artist. So, before we go any further, I just wanted to show this to council, she's given me a proposal for the, for this particular mural, $4,800. Now, in my opinion, I like, I like this, I'm not sure I'm crazy about all this.
Nothing actually much.
It's a little busy down there. Yeah, this is, this is what I asked her initially to do, y'all can see that, but she included this on the columns. And she said, of course, this is not what, you know, this is very, very conceptual, but just to give y'all an idea, to see if it was something you even wanted to move forward with, she would come to the workshop in June. So, and it might be a little less, if we take, if we take this out, and she just does the gable up here, but the quote for this, or the estimate was about $4,800.
Manny, what would look good to me is up in the gable area, if the triangular points of it were not painted in also. Right where, put your finger, right? Yeah, go, go up the triangle a little bit, no, stay on the paint.
Oh, here?
Yeah, yeah, just like from there down, from the other side down, so all you have is.
Just that.
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, that and where it would be. So you're just capturing the picture, and this would, this would match in the color, is kind of how I would see it, rather than all.
What is it a picture of? I can't see it.
It's, it's like a river, it's sort of like a river and the trees and the.
Okay.
So I think some of this came from a photograph that she took, so you've got the sky, a little hazy back here, and you've got some trees, and you've got the water and the whatever that stuff is that floats on the water.
Hydrilla?
The model, yeah.
Tim, you appreciated that, right?
But it was just an idea that we had.
I think the idea of having something with definition, so that if you're on ground or if you're in the water, you could see it, but that doesn't seem like it has much definition.
More definition?
Yes, so that, you know, regardless of what you wanted to choose, you, you don't need to have all this, I, I just think, whatever you wanted to have, whether it was the river, or whether it happened to be.
Where this comes down, extends more, and you don't have as much of this design, is what you're saying? Well, it's up to you guys, if you, this is just an idea, and I don't, you know, if you want to think about.
I'm gonna see the best, Julie, I'm gonna bring her to the, to the June workshop to make a formal presentation to you, if that's what you would like.
And I can give her your feedback from tonight.
I think what Ms. Kenny said is, what I suggested to you, that it kind of blends in, it doesn't, it's not distinct from a distance, it just looks almost like a watercolor. Right, is that what you're saying?
Yes, it doesn't, you know, I mean, there are all kinds of different things that you could have with definition, you could have bird, water birds, you could have.
She said it's just kind of hard to, to get that much definition on this scale, something this small, to be able to show you visually exactly what it would look like, so this is just a concept, to see if this is something that you would actually want to consider doing out there. It's some sort of mural just in that gable.
I, I am, definitely, you're like, what the concept should be is something that could be enjoyed by the people who went through, and, and could see it and could identify it, and I think it has to be something with a clear definition, but then, I, I haven't liked it, kind of.
May I?
Yep.
I agree with Louise and Bill on that, also, if you look at the mural that's on the building as we come down Pennsylvania Avenue, with the, the big gray white eagle and so on, you can get definition that large. I'd also like to recommend you call Nicole Brand, remember her, she came from the Florida Wildlife Quarter Group?
Nicole?
Yeah, she has a very good friend that actually walked around town and looked for, was looking for a spot to paint a mural, and.
What's her last name, Brand?
Nicole Brand, B-R-A-N-D, Florida Wildlife Quarter, she's the PR person, she came here and spoke to us, been quite a while.
Okay, and is she a mural artist as well?
No, she has a friend that, she actually came with a friend.
Okay.
And walked around town, and apparently, this lady, her specialty is doing large building murals and so on.
Well, Erin also has a website, if you'd like, I could email you her website, y'all can take a look at some of her work, and also.
I'd like to see some wildlife in there, definitely.
Yeah, and, and she said she could incorporate anything like that, that, you know, you wanted, she, she just wanted to get some feedback tonight, see if this is something that you wanted to talk further about, if you're interested in, and she'll come to do a formal presentation at the June workshop.
Okay, schedule her, tell her to bring a lot of different options.
Right.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second? All in favor, unanimous, thank you, everyone.